Good evening. Welcome to the joint meeting with the Finance Committee, Advisory and Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, April 25th at 7:00. We're right on time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law that always stands one nation, united in thy power.
As Chairman, I am now returning the meeting over to the Mr. Conlon, the moderator. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is our annual meeting to go over the warrant and go over the motions that will be brought at town meeting and determine if there are any difficulties or unexpected issues and what the level of voltage must be for each of the articles. So we will proceed. Article 1 is for a ballot vote, so we don't have anything to do with that, but I certainly hope that everybody votes. Article 2 is for authorization to borrow from time to time in anticipation of revenue. It's a borrowing article, so it requires a two-thirds majority vote. These, we have some motions, but they're pretty hard to read.
A little small, huh?
When I was younger, I could probably read these things, but...
Want to use these, Dave?
Uh?
Try it.
Yeah, no, that's all right. We'll get by.
Are you actually reading the motion tonight?
Usually, we don't read them, but if there's some issue on any motion, we should check it out. But I can't read this one for two.
Jeff, do you want to, Jeff, do you want to come up and maybe go through some of these with us?
Somebody's got good eyes. The one for two, it seems to have a lot of changes in it, and I can't read what it is.
So motion number two, Jeff Blake from KP Law took a look at the motions that we drafted and provided some suggested edits to run through things a little bit quicker in some cases, or do things, maybe make some suggested changes on certain articles that we've done differently in the past. Article 2, his comment was that there's no law requiring that the motion repeat the entire article, especially given that Article 2 doesn't have any funding appropriated to it. So his comment was, instead of reading the entire article in the motion, the motion could simply say, "I move to approve Article 2 as printed in the warrant."
Well, we will be guarded by the town council. We have normally done it a little more than that, but I think that should be sufficient. I have to say, though, that the problem here is, for readability is with Microsoft Word. Now, you hear today a lot of comment about artificial intelligence. Microsoft Word is replete with artificial stupidity. So that's why they make something that can't be read. So we're just going to have to deal with it.
On Saturday, you won't have the comments from our legal counsel in the margin, so it will be larger, you'll be able to read it better.
Well, that's a pet peeve of mine, sorry. Don't get me going. All right, Article 3. Yes? What do you mean, what about them? As printed in the...
They're going to think it's this.
Okay, so the question is, what about people who don't have anything printed? So we have the recommendations of the FinCom, and that's what's referred to, I believe, when we talk about it as printed in the warrant, right? And they will be available at town meeting. If there's a concern that people won't be able to read those or won't know what's going on, I think what happens is you make a motion the way that the council has suggested it, and then the FinCom explains what the motion's about. If need be, you could even read whoever's presenting. Is that you?
We can simply just read the entire article instead.
Yeah.
It's a matter of preference, not a legal requirement, so we can read the entire article if it's an issue.
Yeah, I think maybe then move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow money to cover current spending needs, something like that. Okay, maybe take, so maybe have a revision of the motion for Saturday. Because I think if we start explaining that there's going to be difference and they've got to go to the book and that sort of thing, that might make it, unfortunately, too complex for some folks to deal with, such as me, for example. So, Article 3. It'll be a motion, it'll be a, no, yes, it is, because it's a borrowing thing, so it's two-thirds, yeah. Article 3 is to see if the town will raise and appropriate money for, to transfer funds, and I haven't seen how that came out. In the book, it wasn't... It had, the transfers hadn't been determined at the time of printing of the book. So is there any borrowing in here, or is this all transferred?
Transferred.
All right, well, then it will be a straight majority vote. Article 4 is to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds some of money for the snow and ice removal. Again, it's a straight majority vote. Article 5 is a, an article to amend the subsection B, the chart of classification and salaries for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019. And here, the people will have to be aware of what is in the recommendation of the FinCom. Now, one of the things that we're going to do in this town meeting is we are going to have a more complicated way of doing ballot votes. So Peggy has arranged to have some folks already determined for tellers, and we are going to try and have, we're also, instead of having stamps on the hands, which can wear off or dissolve if the temperature hits 96, we're going to have wristbands, colored wristbands. So the people who are able to vote will get a wristband and will be, you can see them from a block away, who's going to be voting and who's not. But the other thing we're talking about doing is having like a communion approach, so that the teller will give out, a line of voters will stand up, and their bracelet will be checked, they'll give a ballot, they'll rip up the ballot, and they'll put their vote in the box, and then they'll go back and sit down, just like communion. And the beauty of that is, it will certainly avoid anyone who loses blaming the referees. But the problem with it, I see, is going to be very long periods where we're trying to do votes here, instead of just passing them out and gathering them in. So in years past, we have sometimes had a ballot vote on this article. The town bylaw requires a ballot vote on salaries, anything that awards salaries to town employees. And this article does not award a salary, it sets a salary, but the article that funds the salary is the one that really, is one that requires a ballot vote. And I'd be interested in your thoughts. My preference would be to minimize the number of ballot votes we have to take this year because of this new procedure. And I think that we can get away without having a ballot vote on Article 5. So anyone has any contrary thoughts or any thoughts at all, certainly would be welcome. But as explained by our stellar FinCom, there are two steps. One is to set the rate of pay, and then you have to fund the line item that contains the setting. And this Article 5 is one that sets the rate of pay, but it does not actuate the pay because it is not something that is authorizing pay. Any questions on that? All right. Let's move to Article 6, but I'd be interested in you giving that some thought as well. Okay. Right, good. Article 6 is to fix the salary and compensation of the elected officers. So there are five salaries. Again, it's the same idea as Article 5. You're setting what the compensation rate will be, but not authorizing payment, so we will take that as a straight majority vote. Article 7 is an article to authorize a payment of prior fiscal year bills. Did any prior fiscal year bills show up? We have some. Well, this is the annual meeting, and at the annual meeting, the quantum of vote that is required to pay prior year's bills is four-fifths. So we have a four-fifths vote required for Article 7. Article 8 is the omnibus article, and that is to raise and appropriate the funds necessary to pay the things listed in the omnibus article, including the salaries for the organizations, the town organizations that are listed there, which also include those people whose rates were set in Articles 5 and 6. So this requires a ballot vote, and this will be the first ballot vote we do. And I think we're going to, because of what transpired last August, we're just going to have to take the time to do it the way we're planning to do it. This will be our first experiment with it. We may find better ways in the future, but we're just going to have to beg the indulgence of the voters. By the way, we also have spent a good amount of time trying to figure out where and how to hold this town meeting. So you know what happened in August? We had over 600 people here, and usually we have something less than 200. And the seating, I think, is, the seating that we have, we will also be augmenting by chairs that we get from the school. But seating may, the seating and standing room may get close to 400 or over 400, and it's going to be an issue. We'll have to have, we've got the fire chief and the police chief are here going to be making sure that we maintain safety and order, but we'll have to put people on the floor, we'll probably have to put voters in the peanut gallery, and we'll probably have to put voters on the stage. And we also are going to have, so this, what about non-voters who want to observe? There'll be the usual few on the floor that are town employees, or the press, or people who are going to speak on particular articles, but that's usually about six or eight people, not so many. But there may be some that want to come and observe. So what we've done is we've arranged to have televisions in, that will cover the town meeting, and they will be put in the FinCom meeting room downstairs and also in the planning board meeting room downstairs. If it turns out that we get more people than we can handle here, there, and there, we may have to move voters into one or both of those locations as well. So we're trying to make accommodations that will allow that to happen.
Dave, the people out there can't hear that, so if you could come to the mic, please.
I can repeat it. So the question is, how do we accommodate people that are downstairs in order to be able to vote, and how do we accommodate them for to be able to speak? So the answer will be, I think, we will, well, first of all, we're trying to get connection so that we can, first of all, they'll be able to see what goes on here, but we're trying to get a connection that will bring what's going on down there up here as well. So probably we'll have people who want to speak come up and get in line. And as far as voting is concerned, probably I'll have to appoint an assistant town moderator to take care of the votes down there. Well, again, if it's going to be a ballot vote, as in the omnibus, we'll have to send vote dispensers and people with the mailboxes so that they can take the votes down there. Whoa, how about that?
I'm printing copies of that.
Okay, that's much better. Okay, so you can see we've got a kind of a difficult situation facing us. We want to have as many people come to town meeting and to vote and be actively involved in it as possible, so we're going to do whatever we can to accommodate them.
How many election workers will be downstairs that will... Okay. Okay, so there's five people that won't be, you know, that will have to... Right, but that's, I think he's talking about people that want to come up and vote?
No, that's the election for, she's talking about that being the ballot election.
No, I'm talking about if they want to come up, because Mike had brought up the fact that they might want to come up and vote on the floor.
Yeah.
Also, so it's five. Okay. I just want to know how many people, you know...
Well, I think if we're going to have somebody be coming up from downstairs, we're going to need to have somebody down there that can communicate with us to let us know that people are coming up, so we don't overrun it. You know, while they're coming up, the vote disappears. It could happen. So somebody down there should notify us that somebody's going to be coming up. I'm hoping we won't have to do that. That's going to be a real hodgepodge lodge, but if necessary, we've talked about ways of being able to do that, so we'll deal with it as it comes up. So the omnibus article, it's majority vote, but it's also ballot vote, so we will institute our new regime of getting ballot votes counted.
That's a lot better. Thank you.
So Article 9. Any questions on the omnibus article? Article 9 is to raise and appropriate money for the water and sewer enterprise. And that should be a majority vote. There seems to be no borrowing. It also has salaries?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that will also be a ballot vote, a majority only. Article 10. Article 10 is to... For raising and appropriating money from available funds for water and sewer equipment and paving. So that is, there's no salaries involved in that, so that's a majority vote. Article 11, again, a raise and appropriate for the rubbish enterprise fund. That has salaries, however, so we will have another ballot vote. And our esteemed clerk has printed up, has ballots, up to 600 ballots for each of these things that she's printed up, so we should be covered. Article 12 is raise and appropriate funds for maintenance of the compost area. And that's a straight majority vote. Article 13 is to raise and appropriate funds for highway construction and maintenance, and that's a majority vote. Article 14 is to amend the bylaws to insert a section dealing with new revolving funds, revolving accounts, and to establish a fiscal year spending limit for such funds. Amending the bylaws is a majority vote, and there are no, there's no borrowing here, and there's no salaries here, so it's a majority vote. Article 15 is to reauthorize parks and recreation revolving accounts, such as the sailing and basketball 4th of July committee, et cetera. Straight majority vote. Article 16 is a series of community preservation articles. And we see the recommendations of the FinCom. We will go over these by the subsections. So subsection A is to transfer $27,000 from the estimated annual revenues to the housing account. Straight majority vote. Subsection B is to appropriate $10,000 from annual revenues for administrative and operating expenses of the committee. That's a majority vote. Subsection C is to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $400,000 to deal with the Nahat Public Library. So that's a two-thirds vote. Article D is to appropriate $160,000 for basketball and tennis courts in Flash Road Recreation Area. It's an appropriation, a majority vote. Subsection E is to appropriate $5,000 for the basketball half-court. Majority vote. Subsection F is to appropriate $15,000 for the Nahat softball field maintenance. Majority vote. Subsection G is to appropriate $50,000 for renovations of the council on aging kitchen. Majority vote. I don't see any issues with any of these things either. If anybody sees any issues with them, please pipe up. Subsection 8 is to appropriate $20,000 to construct new stairs for the Tudor Beach to replace the storm-damaged stairs. That's a majority vote. Subsection I is to appropriate the sum of $30,000 for an open space master plan. It's not recommended, but the vote on it would be a majority vote. Subsection J is to transfer any estimated annual revenues not otherwise reserved to budgeted reserve account for later appropriation. Majority vote. And there, we get to the end of the community committee, and we go to Article 17. And Article 17 is to impose a... An Article Seventeen is to impose a local sales tax at the statutory rate of 75 cents percent, 0.75 percent on the sale of restaurant meals. Hmm. You happen to know what the, I don't, it's just a majority? Impose a tax is just a majority? I mean, all right. Yeah, there are some provisions that require more than that, and I just wanted to check. This is not one of them. Okay, that sounds good.
They better read this to be an official decision with the town when they impose the tax. Do you actually think positions of the tax is to be done by the town?
State collects it, right?
I'm sorry?
The state collects it and pays the town. The state will collect the money from the restaurant, and then the state will pay the town.
Well, my question, whether there's any other actions that are already taken at town meeting, other than authorization of the town to impose the tax, in other words, I sense it could be part of something that was right. If there was no action by the town to impose the tax, to be like that, I would say. So would authorization, is one way to act, preposition maybe another. And if we want to do it, it seems to me we ought to do it.
I think the state, the state had adopted that, didn't they? A couple of years ago? They adopted, they adopted the sale.
Hold on. The state adopted this in 2007, Mike, and they do all the legwork. They, people, they file a meals tax, and each state was allowed, each town was allowed to raise their meals tax by 0.75 percent. And that money comes right to us from the Department of Revenue, and I think that's all we have to do.
So.
We got seven.
The statute calls for that.
So I think also this motion for Seventeen, I moved that the, that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, authorizing the town to impose a local sales tax at the statutory rate at 0.75 percent on the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town. So authorizing the town to impose it, I think that puts it in the hands of the selectmen.
Not just the advocate for the new amendment, you said, and to impose the tax. The downside of that.
Want to submit that for?
I think it's a fair assumption, but if that, if you want to do that, then it's not, it's not all. As I was already saying. Chapter 64L says this section shall take effect on the first day of the calendar of course, following thirty days after.
Mr. Moderator, there's not a soul out there in town that can hear what's happening. So, I mean, there, no there, because I've heard it for three years.
So.
People should come to the mic.
Yeah.
Or you can repeat what they're saying.
Let me repeat what's, actually, why don't you read what you just read into the record?
I'd be happy to. Section, Chapter 64L, Section 2C states, "This section shall take effect in a municipality on the first day of the calendar year, following thirty days after its acceptance by the municipality," et cetera, et cetera.
Self-executed.
So it's self-executed.
All right, so Article Eighteen is to raise and appropriate from available funds $25,000 for other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. That's a straight majority vote. Article Nineteen is to raise and appropriate the fund, $100,000 for the stabilization fund, provided that the appropriation is expressly contingent on approval of the voters of the town, election, at an election, of proposition two and a half override, or take other actions. So it's a, it's a, just an appropriation of money that is contingently being made available by the override, majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, so is motion, so is Article Eighteen. So Article Eighteen and Nineteen are both contingent upon the passage of the override.
I see, yeah, you're right. And they're both majority votes. So it's a kind of a mixture. Says, "Raise and appropriate, appropriate from available funds, or raise by borrowing the sum of $476,000 for the costs associated with the repair of storm, storm damage." So I think because the option of borrowing is involved, this is going to be a two-thirds vote.
That?
The motion is raise and appropriate.
No. Oh, the motion is?
Oh, it's a raise and appropriate.
Yeah, that, the intent there is not for borrowing, that as well is contingent upon the passage of the override. It would not be a borrowing, it would be an appropriation.
But it does say, "Or raised by borrowing." That could be confused.
In the, in the warrant article, but I think we clarified it in the motion.
Well, if the, if the motion is limited to raise and appropriate, then it'll be a majority vote.
So if the override fails?
Can you, I'm sorry, Mike, can you jump to the mic?
I understand that the motion is limited to raising the funds by additional tax and not by borrowing, as was stated in the article, the warrant article. But if the motion fails, then does that leave us up a creek? Do we need to borrow? Okay, we've already borrowed and paid.
Correct. The, the, the funds have already been borrowed under an emergency borrowing. This, if the override passes, this would appropriate the sum of money towards paying down that emergency borrowing.
Retire the indebtedness, in other words.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So just to make triply clear, if the override fails, there will be no borrowing. It's already been borrowed.
Correct.
Okay. So it's, it's a straight majority vote. All right. Article Twenty-One is appropriation of $80,000 for paving through the town. Straight majority vote.
And if the Mr. Moderator, I believe that's the law.
Or by borrowing? Ah.
With the motion, so the need is appropriated in the town treasurer, the approval of the selectmen is authorized.
Okay, then it's going to be two-thirds. Well, it's good to have the motions.
I'm sorry, what did you say about the people?
So I will be, but what, what the town council said is that the motion, first of all, the article had borrowing mentioned towards the end of it. And so the motion is, let's see. "I move that the town appropriate $80,000 to pay cost of paving throughout the town, including the payment of any other cost incidental related to thereto, and to meet the appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow." So it's a borrowing article, two-thirds majority vote. Article Twenty-Two is to raise by borrowing $50,000 to be applied to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. So that's a two-thirds majority vote. Article Twenty-Three is to see if the town will raise and appropriate $2,500, which goes towards the fire dispatch equipment maintenance and upgrades. That seems to be a majority vote. Article Twenty-Four is to raise and appropriate, or raise by borrowing. So what do we, what's the motion come out on Twenty-Four?